The Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, June 2nd. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your hand over your heart and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I would like to have a few moments of silence for a longtime friend, John Moore, who passed away last Saturday. And I would also like to have a moment of silence for Mr. George Floyd, who was involved in that hideous crime in Minneapolis. God bless he and his family. It's a terrible tragedy, and I'll leave it at that for now. Please be seated. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Ponce?
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cassidy?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here. Announcements and written communications?
I have four written communications. There's two, Annie, that have been asked to be read into the record. One of them is from Dave Thompson, and it just, he's asking the question, I believe he's outside during oral communication also. He's asking how the city will enforce the face covering ordinance that is part of the May 15th LA County update. And I know that you were provided a memo in your mailboxes at the request of Councilmember Cassidy on what the other counties were doing for face covering, so we could touch upon that later. The other one is from Margaret Bray, and this is what it says. "To the City Council, the council members had mentioned at one of the more recent meetings that the city was going to install hand sanitizers and signs about wearing masks in public areas. Throughout town to date, there are still not any signs or hand sanitizers up anywhere in town. Just wondering what the status of that is. I was also wondering if the city is going to ask the boat to do a thermometer check on all the people that get on the boat from Long Beach. We are doing it in our restaurant, and I know some hotels now are also going to do it. I know it's not 100% accurate, but we still have to try and do everything we can to keep ourselves and our town, our employees, and all visitors safe. Just because we're open does not mean we're opening does not mean we should drop all of our safety measures. This is the time to gear up. I just feel if we get an outbreak of the virus in town, we have to shut down again. It will devastate all of us and take our town to a place of never being able to recover. Thank you for your time and the opportunity. Margaret Bray, a concerned citizen, Maggie's Blue Rose Steve Steakhouse." I did respond back to Margaret, letting her know that I had checked most recently with Jason Paray after I got this email today, and he has still not received them. And I, you know, he ordered them seven, eight weeks ago. I'm sure he's been checking on them, he's been getting updates, so I don't have an update as when they'd be installed through town. But the harbor did install hand sanitizers at the top of all of our floats, as well as there was signage. And the Catalina Express has the sanitizer at the top of their ramps, so if you're going on the boat or getting off the boat, you're able to use that. And I haven't, I didn't, I did not reach out to Public Works Day to see where we are with the signs that we had ordered. And that's, that's it.
Great, okay. So that's it for announcements and written department head reports?
Good evening, Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works. I have two items. The pump-out float, the final details are being completed on the new pump-out float construction documents. The project is funded with significant state funding through the Department of Boating and Waterways. When completed, a new float will support new pump-out equipment. Next steps is to finalize the documents and solicit bids for the float and equipment to be constructed. And the second item is the fuel dock, fuel tank replacement. Scoping work is underway for the fuel dock fuel tank replacement. The project is in part funded with a $500,000 earmark in the state budget through Assemblymember O'Donnell's office.
What's the, what's the total on something like that?
We're thinking that, right now, we're still, that's what the scoping is about, but in the range of $750,000. And as we move through the engineering, through the alternatives there, which we'll present to council in the future, hopefully it would be less than that, but that's a good range right now.
And there's a deadline for that somehow?
Yes, within the next...
Oh, okay.
2025.
Okay, great.
Okay, so that $500,000 helps us get there quicker.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions of Mr. Greenlaw? Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Hope everybody had a great Memorial Day. I just wanted to kind of go over some figures with the Memorial Day weekend that we had. This year, we showed, total boats arrived from Friday to Monday with 237. And we had total night moorage of 613. That's 44 boats less than we had last year. But I think we also need to take into consideration that, one, we've been telling everybody for nine weeks we're closed, and, two, we didn't tell anybody that we were open, just other than phone calls coming in. So we had, we had a pretty good, a pretty good week, weekend.
Yes.
We did get our typical 20 knots of easterly wind in the morning, in the mid-afternoon, which complicated issues, but each person had to have a rope put on them to get them on the moorings and stuff. But all in all, it, I think it was a successful weekend. It, even last year, we didn't fill up descanso, which Memorial Day, because of all the school and everything going on, it's, it's a busy day, but not a crazy, weekend, but not a crazy one. So we, we're moving, we're moving forward. Today, we, in between our projects and stuff that we have, we got the arm up on the hoist today. So we're moving over that nicely, slowly in between other projects that we, that we have to get done. So I suspect the next process of that is putting on the hoist to be able to, and wiring it up and go from there. So all in all, Memorial Day was, you know, again, it was a good weekend. You can't say that, you know, it, it wasn't. And it's, a lot of people were happy to, to get on, to get on the moorings.
And how about this last weekend?
Last weekend was, you know, a typical...
After Memorial Day.
Yeah, it's, again, it just, there wasn't a whole lot of boating. I mean, we were probably three-quarters full, and so people, a lot, a lot of phone calls we got from people at the Isthmus were, you know, had said that if we'd known you were open, we would come down here. But I think it did what we wanted it to do. I think we wanted a slow opening, a slow process, and by, no means have, were the people, you know, rude or discourteous. We'd tell them, put on a mask, they would put on a mask. Our problems of people coming from Orange County, that doesn't have to wear a mask. So, you know, they, they're not understanding it. So I mean, several, I had several masks that I ended up giving them as they're walking off the pier. So all in all, I thought it was, it was a good weekend, so.
Great.
Any other questions?
I, well, Annie asked one, how was the last weekend versus Memorial Day? But how, how do you feel about side tying vessels with families?
I have no problem side tying at all. I mean, we, we've opened, we've opened the harbor, and the reason why we've opened it was to start generating, get back into it. We still tell the people, there's, you know, now there's, restaurants are open, our pier is still closed. But I have no problem rafting, and people, when we get close to filling up, they don't want to be in descanso. Descanso's not a nice place to be in the afternoon when the wind comes up. So personally, I have no problem with...
Do we need to do anything formally, Denise, that would allow for that? I, I know that there are now, specifically with yacht, with the yacht club, their older members now have younger family members that have vessels that would like to side tie together. And after what we've seen with a slow rollout of the harbor, I thought it would be a good time to go ahead and allow that.
And I think, I'm sorry, Denise, what were you saying?
No, that was just verbal, your direction, so it was not part of any ordinance.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so it's just, we're going status quo, and we're, people that want to raft are normally family members, and we're allowing it to happen.
Perfect.
It's okay, well, it's okay by me. I mean, do we need kind of a consensus to side tie? Did it say yes?
I think you, I think you...
Yeah, I think it's fine.
Oh, okay.
I think it was a Harbor Masters discretion, you guys said last time. So we're, we just got to move forward and do it.
No, because I remember the thing was, because I even heard it on the scanner, that it was like, oh, no, you had to have an empty boat, you know, whether it be, so anyway, so that's good. That's good, moving forward.
Yeah, we're, we're ready.
Okay.
Hoping for a good weekend again.
Now, what, so what do we have to do to open our pier, though, so we can get people to be able to do that? We still have to wait a little bit, right?
I think that was in the attestation.
Yes, it is.
Michael addressed a little update on that.
I'm anxious for that.
Our lack of...
Yeah, thank you.
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's about pier open, getting, letting the pier open, so we can, people can do business that way, too. Okay.
Good evening, Captain John Hawking. As we can see, the city's starting to open more. We're getting more visitors to the island. And with that being said, the Sheriff's Department is still basically complying with the safer-at-home order. However, there is some exceptions to, to the rules. And some of those exceptions, such as, we're seeing more businesses open.
Yes.
People still have to wear masks when they go into a business. We're seeing restaurants open to 50%. They still have to wear masks when they're out in line and when they're around a whole bunch of people. When they sit down at their table, we do, they do not have to wear masks, obviously you can't eat with a mask. We are getting some calls, there are people eating in this restaurant, and they don't have masks on. Deputies get there, the restaurant looks perfect. Tables are all spread out, they have the LA County Health Order on the front door, they have the mask in line, they have sanitizer, it looks great. And the deputies get called to it. Deputies look around, go, you guys are doing a great job, and we're out of here, and then they leave. Regarding wearing masks on Front Street, you are required to wear masks on Front Street when you are around other people that are not your family members. Okay, I know I got a little bit of negative comments regarding the holiday weekend. Well, on purpose, on the holiday weekend, we made sure everybody had masks. We didn't know how many visitors we were going to get all at once, so we had to be a little more stringent or strict during that time period. Now that that's over, we're seeing, you know, a lot, less people than we had on that weekend, so now we're just using common sense. If you're around a group of people that aren't your family members, you have to wear a mask. The deputies are probably not going to give you a ticket. They are going to tell you to wear a mask. If you say you don't have one, they're going to pull one out of their back pocket that's in an envelope, and they're going to hand it to you to get you to comply with it. That's how we're enforcing that. Regarding the curfew, we get the buzzers on our, the notifications on our phones, and it sounds like the whole world's ending when you get this buzzer going off. Curfew does apply to Avalon. It is LA County and cities within LA County, so it does apply. With that being said, you can go to the mole and get on the Catalina Express at 7:30 because it's after 6 o'clock. We, the deputies are not going to stop you and arrest you or give you a ticket. You can go to and from work. You can do some common things in Avalon. The reason that curfew was put in place, as we all see on TV, you have a whole bunch of people that are standing in front of buildings, and as soon as the police leave, some of them loot, break into the buildings. Well, now the deputies are able, law enforcement's able to go up there, and if they're in violation of the curfew, now they can legally detain them with reasonable suspicion and arrest them with probable cause, to try to prevent the looting and the rioting. Avalon's a different story, but it is, we get calls all day long, does the curfew apply to us? Yes, it does. If you're out after curfew and you're drunk on a street corner in Avalon, and you could be causing a ruckus, deputies can arrest you, cite you, whatever it might happen to be. So it does apply, but if this meeting goes past 6 o'clock, deputies are not going to be outside writing tickets. It's Avalon, we use common sense enforcement over here. So I hope that answers, we get a lot of questions on that.
Is the curfew on tonight, too?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Oh, I didn't hear my buzzer go off or whatever that thing is, okay.
Yes, it is. I get calls sometimes, as Vons required to close. Vons is not required to close. If, because of the curfew, they don't get a lot of customers later in the evening, they can close early, that's their choice, they're a business, they can do whatever they'd like, but they are not required to close, and they can be open.
Great. And that's just a day-by-day thing at this point?
Yes, at this point, it's day-by-day. They make a decision usually around 12 or 1 o'clock, based on what's going on on the mainland.
Any questions of the captain? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First, I need to ask, did I give you an update about the Zangray?
I didn't see one, but, okay.
The Zangray went to the Planning Commission last month to get a conditional use permit to support a beer and wine license, but part of their application was to also be able to serve the general public. A lot of the neighbors were concerned. The Planning Commission did approve their application to add a beer and wine service at the hotel, but they restricted it to their guest or guest of guest only, and they may not serve the general public in their restaurant on the property. Their restaurant seating capacity in their restaurant is 43 people. That includes staff and dining room, so it's not a terribly large facility. But I just wanted to let you know that they did not approve them for service to the public. The second update I wanted to give you is we received the employee audit from Vons. So that came in on Friday over the weekend, and so we'll be going over those numbers this week to ensure that they are in compliance with either the requirement to not add additional staff, or if they have, then they'll need to come in with their inclusionary housing plan on how they're going to house 50% of those extra employees. So that's all I have, any questions?
Hold on, and then there was, I don't know if Brian reached out to either of you, either Denise or any of the three of you, about during the COVID thing, during COVID, if they could have more employees on or something to that effect?
Brian Riley from Vons, yes, he was given permission. That was at the very beginning of all this, when I believe it was under your comments, Mayor, to reach out to them, that, to see if we could allow that, and that was done through my office.
Okay.
As, and the other day, I saw Mr. Riley at Vons, and he asked also if, in the event that the city is fully reopened, and he needs all these extra protocols for keeping things clean and stuff, that, would that still apply? And I said, yes, as long as our emergency, our emergency resolution is still in place. So I just had that communication with him on Saturday.
Oh, great. And then, as you had said, but we can audit again, because this is going to be a...
Right.
A strange summer, but we can audit again next year.
Correct.
Yes.
And I reached out to them also about the recycling.
Yes.
And I left a message for the person that's in charge of that, and I have not yet heard back from them.
Okay, all right. If you wouldn't mind staying up at the podium for a minute?
Is this your last meeting, Amanda?
I think so.
I know. So, well, maybe I'll just stay here, and then you can go there. But we have a proclamation of the City of Avalon honoring Amanda Cook for her 25 years with the City of Avalon, whereas Amanda Cook became employed by the City of Avalon as an Office Assistant III on August 31st, 1994. And whereas, in July, 1999, Amanda rose to the position of Planning Technician, where she performed a variety of planning tasks, including basically taking review of a wide variety of land use and development proposals. I'm sorry. Well, then I can't hold this, and I can't hold this, and I can't hold that. Sorry. Okay. As the planner, Amanda participated in all current planning, zoning, subdivision, environmental assessment, and design review activities for the city, participated in the maintenance and update of the city's general plan and local coastal program, and whereas, within that same year, Amanda rose to the position as Planning Director. As Planning Director, Amanda had a direct impact in shaping the built environment in Avalon, contributing to projects that have brought affordable housing, renewed and revitalized our existing housing stock, and have brought other projects that have contributed to improving the quality of life for residents and visitors alike. And whereas Amanda has dealt with a diverse range of people, goodbye, can't you remember some of those? And out of City Hall, and provided courteous and comprehensive help to city officials, members of the public, and fellow city staff, and has always been patient and understanding. And whereas, her colleagues know her as a steady, dependable coworker and friend who takes pride in her work and in this community, and who is always ready to lend moral support or a helping hand when needed. Now, therefore, the City Council, the City of Avalon, express our sincere appreciation and gratitude for your dedication and commitment to the city, and congratulate you on the occasion of your retirement from the City of Avalon, and wish you the best and continued success in your retirement and future endeavors. Dated the second day of June by all the Avalon City Council. Congratulations.
I wasn't prepared to make a speech, but thank you very much. It's been a great 25 years. I've enjoyed my work very much. I've very much enjoyed being a part of all of the things that have happened in Avalon. It's very gratifying to drive down a street and see properties that have been improved and enhanced and realize that while I'm not responsible for it, I got to be a part of it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Oh, that is beautiful. Is it edible?
I can't wait for that.
For after the meeting. Yes, and you, and you have to stick around till after the meeting, so we can all have a slice of cake.
Oh, I'm, I'm happy to do that. Thank you very much.
Amanda, before, before you step away, I just want to say that it has been an absolute pleasure, six years as a Planning Commissioner, working with you, guiding me, mentoring me through that whole process, and then the last six years as City Council. I really appreciate all of our time, no matter what.
Thank you.
And I also want to say on behalf of both Mike and I specifically and personally that I know Mike has always really appreciated working for you as a contractor in town, and has had nothing but the kindest words in, in having you as our Planning Director. So thank you for all your service.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Wait, 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 wait. Because I was here, a few years passed, and in those eight years, you were always there to answer questions and help me get through the development and all of that. I appreciate that you were always open to working with us. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I knew you back in the day.
That's true.
When there was a whole heck of a lot of fun.
It was the early days, oh my god.
I just want to say thank you as well, Amanda. I actually used to babysit Amanda's daughter when she was little, little.
Yes.
And then joining Planning Commission for six years as well. I can't, I can't tell you how much I appreciate your knowledge and how much I think the city is going to miss your institutional knowledge. We were trying to figure out a way to download your brain the other day, Jordan and I. So I wish you the best of luck in a wonderful retirement.
Thank you. I don't know if it's okay to announce, but the city has invited me to stick around part-time for a while until COVID turns loose of us and the city can go out and find a replacement. So I'll be around part-time.
She does not need to come to plan, to the council meetings.
No, unless you really need me, I'll be here at council meetings. Thank you guys so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, city staff. Just very quickly, over Memorial Day, more people, more people out of their homes having fun, more opportunity to get hurt, have some medical problems. Nothing any big deal, too serious, but we ran nearly as many calls over the three-day Memorial Day weekend as we did the entire month of April.
Wow.
So, pretty significant. Weed abatement, brush clearance, everyone's been doing a terrific job with that, especially in light of, most, everyone has a shortage of crews and manpower as well as funding. So I just want to commend everyone's hard work with getting that done and to keep doing that. There's still a lot of weed abatement that needs to be done or needs to be touched up, so I'm just encouraging everyone to get that done. We're going around and doing brush inspections right now. And with that, unless you have questions for me, that's all I have.
And you also go down, do we tag houses for the alleys as well?
The alleys aren't technically part of our weed abatement, brush clearance, that's more of a nuisance issue.
Okay.
I, I haven't seen any particular alleys that have a, a large weed growth, but maybe there are. I'll, I can take a look.
Go down to Skanzo. The alley between Skanzo and Catalina is pretty, is pretty rough, but, and those are people that don't live here. So I don't know how, when, when it gets this high, I don't know how, you know, what we do or if we send notices to those people.
Code enforcement can send out notices if the, in conjunction with the fire chief.
I know it's tough, because we've got minimal staff, but, okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any questions of the chief?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. On behalf of the Community Services Department, just a couple of things I wanted to follow up on. As we're starting to see the beaches open, or hiking trails open, and some of the other recreational activity opportunities open, I want to make sure that the community knows and we're all aware that we still have some things that are closed. Playground still remain closed, the swings are closed. I've gone out a couple of times and had to re-put up caution tape. I've heard visitors been on the swings, taken caution tape down, so just a reminder there. Tremont Hall is still closed for gatherings. We're continuing to kind of push out things we had in May and now in June. We hope to do those later in the year. Joe Machado Field, we've had locked up pretty much since day one. The community's been really good up until this past weekend. We're starting to see probably some of our own kids, young adults jump fences, start, as of this past weekend, pickup games. We put out a post on Facebook yesterday, and then as of last night, I'm hearing there's 10-on-10, there's 15 to 20 people up there in a, in a soccer game. So we've asked the sheriff to have a little more presence up there in the evenings. We'll continue to watch this. I just want to make sure that we're, basketball carts are still closed, volleyball carts are still closed, and as soon as we can get those open, we get word, we'll, we'll make those announcements. Secondly, as we get closer to the start of summer, the department's starting to kind of think about some programs that we can be running. We have been looking for alternative ways to get funding for that. Above and beyond the $128,000 that we've raised for the food pantry so far, we have close to $70,000 that have come in for things like running summer camp. close to $70,000 that have come in for things like running summer camp, youth sports program, our Meals on Wheels program, opening the teen center when we have the ability to do that. So, a huge shout out to the Catalina Island Yacht Club. They are in the tune of almost $60,000 in support of that, $70,000. The Tuna Club was about $7,200 of that, and then a private donor was about $2,500 of that. We're hoping to get Beach Bingo back, hoping to have some drive-in movies, if not beach, on-the-beach movies, maybe some drive-in movie opportunities. So, some things that we're looking, and as soon as we have that opportunity to do that, we'll get that information out. So, in closing, I just want to thank the community just for the wonderful support. It's been our nonprofits, it's been yacht clubs, it's been community members, it's been a lot of the visitors, people that just have a real heart for, you know, Avalon and want to do what they can to help out. So, I want to thank them.
Yes, it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I guess you're going to be a department head, too? Okay.
Yeah, no presentation today. Mike Palmer, Assistant City Manager, but I do want to give an update on everything that's transpired. Real briefly, since we last came before you last week. I'm going to start off with, real quickly, a follow-up. There was a request at the last City Council meeting to put together a memo in regards to what other communities across California are doing for face coverings. That memo was sent out earlier today, so hopefully everybody had a chance to get it. Essentially, the short answer is it varies pretty wildly across counties. I do want to say a special thank you to Bryce Knoll with the hospital. He had reached out with some additional studies that he had forwarded to me and I used in looking through, you know, what were some of the jurisdictions. So, that memo was sent out to the council. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to field those at any time. The other thing I wanted to give everyone an update on was, we had talked about putting together our attestation. We had sent out a letter through the assistance with the Chamber of Commerce for letters of support. We received, I think, a pretty overwhelming response from our business community. I want to say we received somewhere around 37 different letters of support from our businesses and business partners. Many of them had included, or several of them had included, some very specific enhancements to the reopening protocols that they wanted to share also. And so, all of that was included. Our formal attestation was submitted to the California Department of Public Health along with the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Chair Barker, and we sent out a copy to our local supervisor, Janice Hahn, and her office. And that was sent out officially on Friday. At that same time, we also sent out copies to all of our legislative partners. This included the offices of Lowenthal, Allen, and O'Donnell. We received confirmations that they had received it along with requests, if there was anything that they could do in the interim, from all of our legislative partners and from Supervisor Hahn's office. Right now, we have not, or at least to date, we have not received any response from the California Department of Public Health, nor we have received any formal response from the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors or LA County Public Health. That's not to say we're not going to move forward, we're going to wait to see what happens. We know that they are under a lot of overload, too, with their email system and everything else, and they're trying to move as rapidly as possible. We will give it another day or two, and then we'll be formally sending out a request for a follow-up to see if there's any status update. We've also been in contact with our legislative offices, specifically Allen Lowenthal's office. We had a great conversation earlier today with their field deputy, and he had made a request if there was anything that we wanted or anything that we needed that he would like to highlight to the Congressman. What we're going to do from the city's perspective is we're going to put together a unifying message or letter, kind of outlining some of the two or three different specific asks that that attestation is in, to say, you know, these would be the legislative priorities, and if we could get some specific exemptions, not necessarily for the entire attestation, but maybe these two or three items that would really contribute to helping to jump-start our economy, and then get support, and then send that out from all of our, so that we're all speaking the same language from all of our legislative partners. So, we're working on putting together that letter. As soon as I have a copy, I'll make sure that that gets sent out to City Council as well as submitted to the public, so they can see, we want to be as transparent in this process as possible. And if anybody has any ideas, please reach out. One of the things that we would like to do is make some specific carve-outs for allowing nonessential travel in a responsible and safe way back to the island so that we can continue our reopening procedures. Speaking of reopening, I also wanted to talk a little bit about some great news that we did hear. On Friday, we did hear that LA County did get their attestation approved, which means that they can move forward with their county variance. That meant as soon as Friday, in-person dining or onsite dining was allowed to reopen as well as barber shops and hair salons. It took a little bit of time between the announcement and the approval of that to the actual revision of the health order, but on Friday evening, the LA County Department of Public Health did amend their health order. We have posted, and we sent out copies to council and on our website and social media postings, along with those new protocols. That said, there's, I also want to talk a little bit, too, about, you know, we just heard from Dan about some of the things that are still closed. However, there's a lot that is moving forward to opening. I do want to caveat that, that this is not necessarily opening without restrictions. This is opening responsibly with social distancing protocols implemented and some modifications to operations where applicable. But there's an awful lot of things that are open and that people can, can do, and businesses can start to plan for and open if they haven't already. This includes things like parks, except for playgrounds, public trails, beaches, pools in a lot of the homeowner association-type places or the multi-unit residential facilities, golf courses, which we've known about in our community for quite some time, community gardens, outdoor recreation and equipment rentals. So, this could include things like bikes, kayaks, paddle boards, libraries can now open, but with curbside pickup only for now. Hopefully, very soon, we'll be moving forward to being able to go inside a library again. Shopping centers and indoor malls, which also include open-air shopping centers, water sport rentals such as stand-up paddle boards, jet skis, boats, parasailing, they can all operate now. Boat and yacht chargers, they do have some limitations, but they can begin operating if they have not as well. Taxis, ride-sharing, and other private and public transportation providers. If you provide a transportation-type service or activity, you are able to open. You've been able to open because you're classified as an essential business, but I just wanted to make sure I did talk about that. And then there's an awful lot of lower-risk retail stores that are able to open. So, if you provide a good or service, and that's a key, a good or a service, and you're considered a low-risk retail establishment, you are able to open as of a while ago. This is not an exhaustive list, but some of the types of retail businesses, if you're looking for some examples, could be toy stores, clothing stores, jewelry stores, bookstores, art shops, if you sell art. Almost all of our, with very few exceptions, almost all of our businesses should now be able to open. There are some things that can't open. Nail salons unfortunately are still in that higher-risk category until we get our own attestation. That is prohibited, as are massages and spas. If you are a business, though, that provide other activities or other services, so if you're a spa and you provide haircutting services, you can open that part of your business, you just can't provide the actual other parts of your business. That's an economic choice and a business choice that businesses are going to have to make, but I do want to make that available. And if anybody has any questions, please continue to contact me, I'm more than happy to chat. Go through any of the orders and go through any of the guides. I know Dan has been extremely instrumental in reaching out to the business community as well as Captain Hawking to make sure everybody understands what needs to be put into place. I think the more that we can do this responsibly, the more we can show how we can implement these measures in a safe manner that protects not just the public, but our employees and our community members, the easier it'll be as we continue to allow more sectors and more types of businesses to open in future stages. So, with that, I'm available for any questions.
I just want to have you reiterate it. The attestation that we sent in to LA County on Friday has not been returned yet with a yea or a nay?
Right.
It has not, no. We sent it out, copies were sent to the, it was made out to the Chair and to Dr. Ferrer with LA County Public Health. A copy was also sent to Janice Hahn and California Department of Public Health. We have not received a response either way.
Okay. So, since water sports are able to open, we have several on our pier. Are visitors going to be taken aside or harassed in any way if they go down the pier in order to participate in a water sport activity?
They shouldn't, but anybody who has a business located on the pier, what I would encourage them to do is reach out directly to Denise Rye and JJ, and we're more than happy to walk over their business plan, see if there's any modifications that we can recommend or make to ensure that we're able to allow them to open and perhaps change how people are able to access those services.
Great, that's wonderful. And just, that was, I'm so happy for you to show how excited we are that all of these things are what we are calling are beginning again, and beginning again to invite the visitors back to Avalon. So, I'm trying not to use the O-P-E-N word, but recommending is the word we're going to be using, and that means to begin again. So, we are beginning again to welcome our visitors. The other thing I would like to say, because there was some confusion today, hotels, our hotels and vacation rentals are taking reservations. That's all I want to say.
Yeah, and hotels and lodging are able to operate, they are in the central business, they've been able to operate for quite some time.
Yeah, and they are taking, yes. Okay, that's great news. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. City Manager Report.
I have nothing other than to, for the record, to make sure you know that Scott Campbell is present also via teleconference.
Okay, and Scott?
Not yet.
Got anything for us?
Yes.
Have anything to report?
No, not yet.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Council members.
Yes, I have something for everybody. Bear with me here, and this is something that's important to me and I know also very important to a lot of other community members. So, please bear with me here.
Of course.
All right, so, I wanted to let you guys know that we did have some bright and wonderful young people who have returned home after graduating college, that have reached out for the community's support in organizing a peaceful gathering and a moment of silence to honor the memory of George Floyd. And that's all it is. We are not using the word "march." We are not protesting. This is just what exactly what I just said, "And organize a peaceful gathering in a moment of silence to honor the memory of George Floyd." We have contacted the right people, we have spoke with the city, we have spoke with Captain Hawking, we had made sure that we said it's just that.
Great.
I did also want to say that they've gathered links, so anyone that's interested in donating to support this cause, we have that information. We aren't releasing the event information just yet, you know, because of, there's a couple of concerns, so we want to go ahead and alleviate that, and we're just going to hold off on the information. But if you feel like interested in participating, feel free to reach out to me, and I will let you know with the correct information. But also, on a personal note, I would like to directly address and offer a clarification to those who have started a false narrative about me on social media. I am not organizing this event, and I do not, as was implied, support violent riots or the destruction of personal property. I am assisting and supporting our island youth in my personal time. I choose to be involved because the majority of folks in our community experience racism, inequality, and prejudice in a variety of forms every day of their lives. Some are scared to voice themselves because they're afraid of the backlash. But know that these individuals are your neighbors, your coworkers, your employees, your friends, and in a community that enjoys such diversity, it is essential that our youth can express themselves in a safe and constructive way. I am an elected City Council member, and it is my job to listen in response to the concerns of our community members, especially when they're expressing themselves peacefully and respectfully. This is true regardless of whether I agree with the concerns presented or not. It is my job to listen and support community members, not to silence or suppress their voices. I have an open-door policy, and I'm always willing to sit down and discuss any concerns or suggestions about my positions on matters that concern this community. If you disagree with me about something, that's fine. Please reach out to me directly rather than spreading falsehoods about my positions or disparing my character on social media. I refuse to allow any cultural bullying within this community. Please, people, because, I'm sorry about that, because people disagree with me sitting on this chair and serving this town. I refuse to let it discourage others of wanting to sit here and serve as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That was beautifully said, Yesenia. I do have a question, so it's not going to be tomorrow at 3:00?
I'm not releasing any information on here right now.
Okay.
For the concerns of businesses, so we're going to hold off on that.
Oh, okay, because, okay, thanks.
Yes, but if you would like to reach out to me, definitely can speak about it.
Okay. Or is Bryce one of the organizers?
He is helping as well.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you for listening.
Lisa, Councilwoman?
I just want to echo Yesenia's comments and am thankful that there is a part of the community that is wanting to recognize this, both for the people that live in town and the people that come to visit here, knowing that our community is thankful for the support we have from LA County Sheriff and for the work they do within the community, and knowing that as good as any process or program is right now, there's always something better that can be done, and just trying to make sure that we're working together to have policies in place that support the community that we have. I think that previous councils have done a great job of trying to do that, and I think there's things that we can do as well to try to move that forward, especially after we get out of the COVID of it all.
Yeah.
I will be attending on Thursday, League of California Cities Training for, excuse me, tomorrow, no, Thursday, Thursday the 4th, for council member, newly-appointed council members. So, we'll be attending that and reporting back on that if there's anything to share. And...
Is that a, is that a?
It's just a phone, yeah, conference.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, they have, I think, three set up for the next few weeks in a row to kind of help out with stuff, so. And then just wanted to thank the visitors that did come over Memorial Day weekend and the frontline employees that did work. Everyone, from what I could see, was doing a wonderful job, being very respectful for the most part. A couple of issues which are bound to happen when people get back together again, but was thankful for how it went and hopeful that the things that are being put in place by businesses right now will continue to make that be the kind of way that people interact. And the one thing I will say with regards to residents is just to be mindful, you may get people saying, and I heard it a couple of times when I was downtown, that people should be thankful we're back. We are thankful, but we also just need to understand that we don't have to respond if we feel that they're being disrespectful. It's not worth responding to that. So, please just try to remember that we need to be as respectful as possible and, you know, go high when you have to. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan, or should I? Presentations.
You can do it now.
I'm going to do two things right here.
Good.
First off, is if you have not yet signed the petition for getting the hospital on the ballot, please sign that petition. You can turn it in until tomorrow afternoon at Leo's. So, if you have not signed the petition, you don't have to be supporting the measure, it's just we want to get it on the ballot so we can get a vote on it. That's number one. And number two, in what is going on in the world, this is something that's very near and dear to me. Love wins. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon, recognizing the month of June as LGBTQ Pride Month, whereas the City of Avalon supports the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom from discrimination, and whereas all people, regardless of age, gender, identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges, have the right to be treated on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings. And whereas the residents, students, city employees, and business owners within the City of Avalon who contribute to the enrichment of our city are part of the LGBTQ community, and whereas various... and whereas various advancements have been made with respect to equitable treatment of the LGBTQ community throughout the nation, but there continues to be some opposition against people from this community and around the world making it important for cities like Avalon to stand up and show support for our residents who are affected. And whereas several cities across the United States recognize and celebrate June as LGBTQ Pride Month, and whereas June has become a symbolic month in which lesbians, gay men, bisexual people, transgender, and supporters come together in various celebrations of pride, and whereas the rainbow flag, also known as the LGBTQ pride flag or gay pride flag, has been used since the 1970s as a symbol of LGBTQ pride and social movements. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Avalon does hereby declare the month of June as LGBTQ Pride Month in the City of Avalon and invites everyone to reflect on the ways we can live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding. Dated the 2nd day of June 2020, signed by all the members of the Avalon City Council.
Very nice, thank you.
Thank you, I'm so honored to be a part of that.
And Cindy Loup?
Well, one, I want to say I took a very nice, long social media mental health break. So when I did go back on, I saw nearly 150 tags for posts and whatnot, but that was not personal that I didn't respond. I just have done a lot through this whole last couple months, and I've been there for the community the last couple months on social media, and I just needed a mental health break from it. And I was very discouraged in checking back in on a couple things to see that there's still a lot of negativity and divisiveness even in our own community. And I hope that with what our world is going through right now, that we all take a moment to breathe and to, you know, address each other with kindness and care. This is the time for us to all be better people and all to work together, find solutions together, and, you know, accept each other for our faults as well as the things that we like about each other. So that being said, I have been very worked up over the last couple weeks about some lack of services in our community. And I know, city manager, you have reached out to Avalon Environmental, and I, rather than be angry and upset at the very severe lack of service, I would rather give them an opportunity to, or yourself, if you were prepared, to let us know how they plan to make amends for the missed service over the last couple months. I don't know if you have in fact met with them. I know their new operator is going to be here.
Yeah, we're meeting them tomorrow.
Okay, great. Because we, now as we're opening up, commercial trash service once in 10 days is really going to hurt the community more with the birds, the trash, the, you know, all of that. So however we can help, I know the council's supportive of that, and however we as business owners or individuals at home, however we can help to mitigate if there's a concern on their end, let's get it out there so we can do our part.
Absolutely, we are very appreciative of the pictures we've been receiving because we need those to pass those on to our contractor to resolve the issues, so.
And that's all I have?
I, SCAG, Southern California, Southern California Association of Government had a meeting online. They elected a new Chair and Vice Chair for the Economic and Housing, what CEHD that I'm on, so. Anyway, I don't know the people. One guy's from Cerritos, and I don't remember where the other one's from. That was the only business that we had. A couple of things, I know that we touched on it last time, and about talking about outdoor dining. There's still a rumble about, I'm not even going to look at the chief right now. There's still a rumble about outdoor dining with maybe some other kinds of suggestions that don't involve blocking Crescent Street perhaps. So because as, if these restaurants are opening at 60% capacity, for some of them, it's still not going to be worth opening at all. And so I don't know if, maybe I should just talk with you and Michael about some of the things that come up. I don't know if that's something that we want to talk about a little bit going forward, because I don't know. Well, we're never going to be able to open their doors and have full restaurants. So there's some kind of other creative things out there that maybe we could discuss.
I am hopeful, Mayor, that who, the businesses that are interested in doing that would come forward, maybe unite together, come forward with a plan either through the chamber or themselves as a group, bring it forward to the city, and then we can go through it and see if there's issues with it, and if it's something that can be, in a format that can be presented to the council to determine the policy on it. We will certainly be doing that.
Okay, that's great. So y'all heard it out there, right? Okay, thank you. Also, the senior banner project. What, how bitchin' was that? All of those graduates and that big beautiful banner? I just want to say, on behalf of the city, Dan Hunky, of course, was much involved with that, but the main organizers of that were Nikki Flynn, Avalon Rotary, Nicole?
Hohenstein.
Hohenstein, and an anonymous donor, but there was also Chris Arnold, Josh Flynn, Julie Glass, Micah Phillips, Matt and Joe from the Teen Center, Donna Sharp, Jim at Air Speedy, Jen and Jad Davi at Catalina Flying Boats, Edison and Island Express. But I would like to just give a shout out to all of our graduates. First of all, I don't know when graduation would have been. Oh, okay, so I just would like to read our graduates real quick. Abigail Zaragoza, Aldo Jimenez, Alexa Delli, Alan Arneson, Angel or Angel Peguero, Angel Silva, Angel Verhien, Antonia Ramos, Brian Escudido, Camila Martinez, Silviano Peguero, Daniel Madrez, Daniel Silva, Dominic Hernandez, Elijah Breeze, Emmanuel Jimenez, Evelyn Chavoya, Faith Glass, Fernando Jimenez, Georgina Carillo, Jacob Morales, Jasmin Cruz, Jesse Machado, Juan Castro, Juan Julian Aranda, Lizeth Martinez, Navia Hotendorf, Melia Gayan, I'm sure I screwed that one up. Pedro Marcus Chavoya Jr., Brylin Flynn, Sarah Silva, Saul Martinez, Shane Machado, Sol Vines or Sol Venus, Stephanie Hernandez, and Tammy Chavoya. So let's have a round for, a round of applause for our seniors. Flags at 2020. And that's all I have.
Annie, can I just echo your comment about the seniors and the flags that went up? They look so classy.
Yeah, I know.
And I would love to see if there's a way that we can work with Edison and the city going forward that maybe we could have an ongoing rotation of different types of things or themes over the course of the year. But they just look so classy, and been a long discussion of possibilities.
Yes, no, that's good, because a few years ago, it was like, oh, that can't happen, but look what can happen. So it's a really nice precedent.
On that note, there was a group who was going to look at doing that, it just never continued on. But Gail and I were on that advisory group of seeing how we can make it work. So, Gail from the museum.
Yeah, so the door's been opened, been opened, okay. Let's get down to...
Oral communication.
Yep, this is an opportunity for people in the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to a couple of minutes, and no action will be taken. Oh, this says 3:00.
How, do we, what's our time today?
Well, I said 2:00.
2:00, okay.
That says 3:00.
That's great.
Hi, Rock, and this is an item that's not on the agenda you're speaking to?
Correct.
Okay, come on up.
Okay, Rock Osland, 318 Whitley. I got my own timer here too, if you'd like. My discussion tonight is to direct kind of a lot of rage and feeling of disrespect as a business owner. One of several business owners has been getting disrespected the last couple of months. The, also the disrespect goes from some of the council members up here who still have to go through their new council member training, and it's disrespect to the staff that supports them. If I had operated my business with the minutia and the nitpicking and the uninformed questions that have come out of some of the members of this group, my staff would have walked away from me. I have been working with people in my industry ever since this started 10 weeks ago. We have developed protocols, we have come up with ideas, we have come up with ways to mitigate danger to our employees. OSHA and other regulators have had items in place, verbiage in place for decades. This isn't the first plague that has befallen people and had to take care of stuff. We haven't gone to issues like this with tuberculosis, AIDS, Zika, Dengue, and those all still exist in LA. Before COVID became fashionable to throw around, we all went about our business and we all gave each other germs. This is just a new way of protecting and stopping a spread of this particular contagion. But you guys continually ask questions that have been asked and answered. I still got five. But the other issue is, is that when you direct staff to do something, they are asking for direction. They are not asking for you to dot their i's and dot their t's. And I am certainly not being in business to sit and have someone tell me I can't have bedspreads in my rooms. I think you guys are stepping out of bounds, and I think you need to have some more respect for your staff and your fellow citizens out there. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, while we're waiting for Dave Thompson, I just want to remind the public that tomorrow at 4:00, there's Minutes with the Mayor. So stay tuned tomorrow.
Good evening, council. David Thompson, 110 Chimes Tower Road. Some of what, this is a presentation kind of on signage, and maybe it'll be redundant, which is probably a good thing. Mike, can you hand these to the council and for you and Denise? But basically, right now, when you're getting off the boat, I was just off the boat on Sunday, they tell you that when you get off the boat, you have to keep your mask on until you're off the boat, and then that's the end of it?
Thank you.
When you're walking into town, you don't see anything that would make you realize that you need to wear face covering or have social distancing? We've got people from all over the world that are coming here, and, you know, like Riverside and San Bernardino have eliminated their face covering ordinance, but we're still under LA County, and I hope that if LA County lifts it, that Avalon will actually continue it. It's about the only thing that we can do to not have this spread and become prevalent in this community. If we're wearing the mask, it's, I mean, it's all you got. And if you're not all wearing them, you might as well not wear them at all. So it can't be just haphazard, it has to be enforced, it has to be realized, and it has to happen. So I have taken, this is directly from the ordinance that we're following right now, verbatim, and basically this is what should be on the signage, and it should be big enough so everybody can read it. We need to have it, maybe at least a dozen signs in town, and then that way, everybody will be on the same page. So I hope that the chamber expresses it when they're talking to people, the harbor, when the people are coming in, they make them understand it, and they express, you guys can certainly call the express and say, would you please just tell them that you have to keep your mask on when you get off the boat? But we, right now, there is no way that a lot of people are coming in, and they just don't know. So maybe, maybe you guys could tell me what the signs are that are ordered, because I can have the signs made by Monday in the island that state this for like $240, and the Lions will buy them. Bob just has to put them up, but maybe they're already coming.
They're a lot simpler than this, Dave. They're more the, we got them off of the LA County Public Health, and more of a picture, you know, where it says, "Wearing Mask." Bob Greenlaw, can you remember exactly what they said? But they're definitely simpler, Dave, just because we've discovered that if signs are too wordy, people won't even pay attention to them, so it's more of the...
Will you have some that are right as you exit the ramps at the mole?
Right now?
Right now, and that's... So that's what we started, so we start with the most minimum sign so that people, when they got out, and it was a graphic more though than words, long list of words. And we would supplement to whatever was necessary, whatever we received, comments from the public. It's good that you're providing input. But as we roll through it, opening more things up, there may be additional places where we need to put those signs, and that's what we're waiting, because when we first put those up, that was last week, and it was just a comment of getting off the ferry to tell people that, once you got onto the ferry, in that area of the mole, you needed to wear a mask. That was a highly concentrated area, even though they were outside. So that was our intent. And then also, as you got onto the ferry, you need to keep that mask on. And then as you left the ferry area, so you started walking down the walkway, and if it was maybe no other people around, then it was like, the intent, from my understanding, was not to have a mask on unless you were in that, like, like the captain said, in close proximity to other people. And, but you carry a mask, and then you put it on when you, was necessary. So following the social discipline you got on.
Is the verbiage similar to this? Are you being, are you being forceful enough to make people understand that it's a law? It's an ordinance? And that's right off of the LA County website.
What we can do is we can look at what the actual verbiage is, and then we can quote the actual section and put something in there that just says, "Subject to potential fine."
So whatever we're directed to do, we'll get up and put those around and keep on trying to make them better as we go.
Let me ask you this, so, I mean, you guys have got some signs coming. Do you know when they're going to be here?
They're on order right now, so I would say, you know, it's just like the hand sanitizer, everything is like backordered, you know, so. And then, of course, we can make signs. So it's, I guess it's just rolling it out as it is necessary, and as we get more people on, it will be more necessary.
A lot of stuff is happening right now. I can have these made, and the Lions can pay for them. I can give them to Bob and put up on Friday or Monday. If you guys want to do that, and I don't think you have to make a big deal out of it, if you want to do it, we'll do it. It doesn't cost you anything, it just takes them a Bob's time. If you agree that this is something that would be beneficial to our town?
I think the more education that's out there, the better. If the Lions Club is interested in procuring the signs, as long as they're the appropriate wording that the city needs them to be.
It'll be this way.
If it's, if that's the ordinance, and get the ordinance number on there and whatnot, I think by all means, move forward, and the ones that we ordered, we can utilize another spacing around town.
It's good to have, it's good to have consistency in signage.
Yes, that was our message, and try not to put too many signs all over the place. Put them where you would have high concentrations of people, especially when you were coming off, and coming off and you were coming from a different area. That's why the mole, it was so important. Then as you transition to another area, you may need another sign. Otherwise, we may have, you know, over a bunch of signs, and we'll try to, on Avalon here, not have too many. So make them so that we don't get sign fatigue, you know, but, you know, so make, get your bang for the buck.
It's also, Michael touched on it, I didn't mean to hit the nerve, I apologize, but Michael touched on it, I was asking for this very reason. You touched on it last time, that it is a personal responsibility. So I picked up my daughter from the boat this morning, and three separate individuals walked right up the gangway, pulled their masks down, and lit cigarettes. And I was personally offended by it because I didn't want to smell the smoke while I was waiting for my daughter. Second to that... Second to that, there was a handful of people that came into the hardware store today that are locals, that are, I'm like, hey, you know better. Please, could you put a mask on? And pulling your shirt up is not putting a mask on. So I, you know, it is a, it is a personal responsibility too, but I, I don't want to, I understand both sides of it, but I also know that I've been trying to get PPE supplies such as sanitizers, dispensers for, you know, 10 weeks myself now. And as a wholesaler that's able to do that, I'm having a hard time getting certain things. So I just don't want to see us be held up longer than this opening this weekend.
And we, Cindy and I had the discussion last meeting about masks and then conversation afterwards. I did, I, my comment to her, why I was so adamant about the mask is, they're coming into our home. If I go visit somebody, I'm going to find, I'm going to follow those house rules. These are going to be our rules, they're going to have to follow our rules. It's, it's, as a guest somewhere else, I'm going to stick to what they've set up. As guests here, they should stick to what we're setting up.
Well, and I know that the sheriffs say they're, they're meeting every boat. I don't know how long you're staying there and I don't know where you're, where you're stationing yourselves when they come off. And maybe you should be at the gang, if you're not at the gang planks or whatever you call them, maybe that's where you should be stationed, also to reiterate the masks.
Yes, we do meet every boat and we're stationed, walking, we basically have approximately 150 people getting off the boats and about 100 getting on the boat. And I personally walk on the boat, I tell them, don't take off until I'm off this boat. And I walk on the boat because what happens is people put their masks on, they hand them their ticket, they get on the boat, then they take their mask down. They have a soda or a beer and they think if they have a beer, they can deal with the, not wear a mask the whole time. Coming off, I have video camera that, a body cam of us going up to, to residents on this island that do not have masks and asking them to put their mask on. Put your mask back up. The signage, I think that's great, having more signs like that, but it needs to be simple. Needs to be a large mask like the ones the Catalina Express have right now. Must wear mask. The people really don't care about the section. They, they, they don't know, they aren't going to stand there and read a big, long thing, but the more there is, the better. And within reason, I mean, you don't want it looking, looking trashy, but overall, you need something simple. A mask, must wear mask, must wear mask around others, however you want to phrase it. But we are at those boats every single day. We probably have missed a couple this week because of conference calls regarding the things over town and the time change. When we missed, I went out there and I go, hey, where's the boat? Well, they changed the time. They got me.
Yeah, okay.
So that's it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Well, just to sum up then, we went out to Descanso the other day and walking from the casino way, you know, there were, most of the people did not have masks. You're confined in a situation where you're going to be less than six feet away. They're going to pass you. You're going to walk through their cloud. So I would suggest we need them out at Via Casino. We need them out at the casino coming back in. What happens after that is not city. But we also need them at, at the, right at where the intersection of the, the Green Pier. And why don't we, if you wish, I can do this, I can make these signs up, we'll pay for them, I'll give them to Bob. He can decide how he wants to mount them, where he wants to put them. But right now, there is not nearly enough, and it's not fair to the people coming over here to have, get bad looks and stuff. A lot of them don't realize that they have to have a mask on.
Right, right.
And please talk to the express, have them announce it. There's no reason they can't. And have, have the harbor make sure they tell all the boats that are coming in and that kind of thing. We can put it out in the chamber. Because we're either going to do this all together or we might as well not do it at all, because it's baloney to go down there and wear a mask and have a troop of like a dozen people walk by. It's like, it's not good. Thanks for your time.
Yeah, I, personally, I would, I mean, I would like to leave the, the wordage or whatever we do with the sign to the discretion of the staff, because I think they're hearing this. And if we think we need to have signs immediately because we don't know when those others are coming in, we may want to do something sooner than later. Just a thought, a direction, I don't know.
I would like to.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So, and we've all got this. Thank you, Dave.
Yeah, I know that this is, is a lot of words, but on the other hand, a lot of people don't understand that it's actually an ordinance. It's an LA County ordinance. It's not just something that we're just throwing out there.
Right.
So.
Okay.
I'm going to make these and give them to Bob and you guys can decide what you want to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay. But didn't you want to run it by staff first before you had them made?
Well, I don't want to wait. You don't have, I'm sorry.
Anybody, Sid, Michael or Denise, do you want to respond? If he has, I mean, sure, they're not going to look like this, but are they just going to be paper? How do you, how do you make a sign and then just, it's not like it can be like a...
No, it's not that. It's, it's just typical sign that are all over town. They're made on, I can't remember the board name, but if Denise would like to have a meeting before we move forward or Michael, that's, that's great. Whatever you guys want to do.
Great.
Yes, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, we'll reach out.
Okay.
Okay.
Tomorrow morning, Dave, we'll reach out.
Okay, well, yeah, I'll call you or you can call me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is it nobody else? Okay, so let's go into...
Any comments?
Uh, no, no comments.
Okay, thank you. Let's go into regular council meeting.
We have consent calendar. There's three items on the consent calendar. We have minutes from the regular meeting of May 19th and the special city council meeting of May 27th. We have expenditures for a total amount of $548,101.03 for total dispersment between May 11th and May 22nd of 2020. We are asking you to adopt a resolution appointing Mayor H. Marshall to the City of Avalon Voting Delegate and Councilmember Michael Ponce as the alternate delegate for the annual Southern California Association of Governments Regional Conference and General Assembly, which is held in June, and it will be via Zoom.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar items one through three.
All circle. Is there any comment? My only comment is, the warrants went down from over $700,000 last time to 500 and something this time. Boy, you, you're really cutting. You have really cut. Yeah. Okay, it's been, motion in a second. We're going to call for the vote and we're going to use our little voting machines today.
We are?
We are?
I don't have it by me, so...
Sarah doesn't have one, because I have it here.
We'll, we'll establish that next council.
Okay. Sorry about that.
We really didn't need to do that anymore. It would be just like last, the other times. Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponce?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Item number four.
Okay, this is general business and we have Public Works Director Bob Greenlaw giving you an update on Cabrilla Mole Phase One project and we will be asking for the expenditure monies.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I have quite a few details here, so I'm going to try to get through it as quick as I can, but it is going to be, you know, at least 10 minutes to get through some of these details. So I'll provide some background first for the public. So for reference here is an aerial of the mole that's up on the screen right now. Phase one is the wharf outline that's in blue, the rectangular that's in blue. And phase two is the area outlined in orange. So as I'm speaking here, that just kind of gives you a sense that this is a two-phase project and we're currently working on phase one, which is the outline in blue. So here's some background. The Cabrilla Mole Ferry Terminal Revitalization Project, Mole Phase One, is the first phase in a two-phase project to revitalize and enhance public facilities at the Cabrilla Mole Ferry Terminal. The scope of the first phase is to rehabilitate the wharf portion of the mole by reinforcing the existing concrete members and steel grates, repairing the existing concrete deck and railing, and the installation of a pedestrian shade structures. The second phase is a more robust effort to rehabilitate and transform the ferry terminal and floats into a complete multimodal transportation facility that will serve the community for the next 20 years and beyond. The effort will include a new ferry terminal building, float rehabilitation, and enhanced land transportation facilities. Construction's underway on the first phase and preliminary engineering has commenced on the second phase. Construction could possibly begin in late 2021 on the second phase. Both projects are funded by significant federal grants from the Federal Transit Administration in addition to local harbor matching funds. In June 2019, city council awarded, awarded Mole Phase One construction contract to the lowest responsible bidder, Slater Waterproofing, with a total base bid of almost $3.4 million. Based on the bidder's response to a bid alternate that we included, it was determined it was cost effective to include and award that deductive bid alternate. So the net bid then was three, about $3.2 million. And just for reference, there were five bidders, so it was very competitive. And the bids ranged from 5.6 million approximately to that 3.4 million. So construction commenced in August 2019 and has continued on a steady pace. For the most part, the construction progress went as planned with the exception of a few high tide events coupled with wage surge events that damaged contractor scaffolding. And that's what you saw floating in our harbor and on Lover's Cove. And they were, and that scaffolding was used to provide a static working surface underneath the wharf. Additionally, impacts were realized due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And the most significant issue that has developed as construction progressed was the incremental increase in quantities for beam and deck repairs. And they have come extensive, you know, increase in quantities. So those estimated quantities are consistently coming in on the low side thus far as work progresses. The reason for this is that the extended damage, once the spalled concrete, and so a spalled concrete is when you see where it's, the surface of the concrete is delaminating, and you'll see that in some pictures ahead, when the reinforcing bars, steel reinforcing bars become corroded and then saltwater intrusion in that whole system causes the concrete to spall. And so at that point, then it doesn't become, the system is supposed to be a composite material with reinforced concrete. So the cement and the concrete being reinforced and becoming a structural member. It weakens it. So the, this type of rehabilitation work is prone to uncovering significant additional damage during construction. And therefore, the estimate utilized a high contingency factor on top of the reasonable estimate. In this case, the contingency added 25% to the final total, but even that is coming far short to complete the necessary work. So several alternatives have been explored to contain costs while still completing the necessary scope of work. So for reference, here is the estimate that we started with. And you can see the second line from the bottom, we had 25% contingency in there. And then that's what we presented to council when we awarded this. Okay, so, and I got a little more blurb on the engineering estimate here. So for reference, the project's engineering estimate was based on estimated quantities that were generated by the design engineer through data and analysis as presented in the design report for the Cabrilla Mole Ferry Terminal Revitalization. And this is the report, this was the cover. And it's, it's an approximately a 70-page document. And it was attached to the agenda item, the pertinent pieces that were important for our discussion tonight. The data and analysis in the report was developed through expert opinion with reasonable assumptions based on field observations and experience. Field investigations included divers that were registered engineers as well as assessments from the vessel underneath the structure by registered engineers. Concrete was sounded, so pinged, when you hear a hollow sound, when you ping on the concrete, you know there's a void there, to help determine the extent of the damage to the reinforced concrete components. The design engineer additionally received input on the assumptions and estimates from regional contractors that are specialists in this type of rehabilitation work. And that's common for the design engineer to get a better sense of getting their feet on the ground and really proofing out what their estimate was, was you reach out to contractors within the regional area and say, what do you think about our contract prices, our, our means and methods of what we're proposing to do here? And they received that and that's what helped them solidify their estimate. So that was our design engineer that did that, Michael Baker. So, and then as we move on, here is what the mole looked like before we started. And certainly, we haven't seen it this way for almost a whole year, okay? But you see that the grates were corroded. Underneath those grates, there's three beams in each hole. And each of those were extensively corroded and some of them had holes in them, in the middle of the web. So that's why there was no traffic allowed to drive on these things for years. And then you had that spalled concrete and you could see, especially as you get approached the grate and anywhere in that area of the wharf, not where we're built on top of the rocks, there was spalled concrete, that reinforced concrete. So while the bids were significantly higher than the engineer's estimate of almost 2.8 million in the existing budget, it was presented that the timing award, then that the timing of the delivery of phase two could be a possible solution to cover the funding gap. It was predicted that a slower delivery of phase two engineering components could provide that funding. This was based on assumption that an increase in the cross-channel carrier warfage fee implemented in March of 2019 would provide additional funding dedicated to harbor capital projects. Mole Phase One was identified as one of those priority projects when city council authorized increased warfage fees. It was noted that potential cost adjustment measures that could be implemented in the construction contract that could delay a portion of the scope of certain items until phase two, that could, were not essentially completed phase one, such as 25% of the deck repairs. And so when we first went into this, we thought maybe that was a possibility. But these, these cost adjustment savings would help provide necessary funding for contingencies and construction inspection. And for the most part, the inspection was done by the building official as we brought John on and then myself. So we didn't have any additional outside cost besides Michael Baker's design support, in which is, you know, not a very large amount compared to what usually a construction engineering contract would be, 10% of the contract, the construction contract. So that would be almost $300,000. So through our efforts, we've saved a significant amount of money just because you have trained people here to be able to do those services for you. Yet significant additional damage was revealed near the structural steel components, so the steel beams and grates that need to be completed in phase one. So those potential cost savings that we had discussed, that we discussed when we did award it, were not realized. So there's a need for supplemental funds to complete the work that was even greater than the original shortfall of the low bid in the engineer's estimate with contingency. While this is not great news during these very limiting times, the good news is that there's alternatives. And these alternatives consider, this is just the first phase of a multi-phase project, and additional work at logical terminus points can be phased into the future work. So just to show you what I'm looking at, and I don't know if, sorry that the, comes out so small on the slide, but what this was, if you look at this, this is, just to get some, some naming conventions here on some of these parts that you'll look at as I speak further. So we're looking at the typical wharf section. So if I looked at the, and I was standing at the very end, looking toward the mole crane and looking through a cross section, that's what this would look like, where the mole has the rock built and that's onto the left side there. And then you would have the components of the wharf and the vertical member you see all the way at the far edge there in the photo, that's the pile that goes into the seafloor. And then going from out there at the edge by where the pile is, back to the rock, that's a traverse beam. And then you've got longitudinal beams that go down the face, okay? So I'll be using all those terms, so, you know, when I'm discussing the beams. So that's, really gets down to the alternative discussion. So we're getting into the meat of what it is. Hang with me here, I've got about another five minutes of getting this background to you, and then I'll get down to just the three alternatives and the, the dollar aspect of it. So... So, the alternative discussion. First, consider the beams underneath the structure. There are 21 traverse beams, beams that span near the terminal building to the wharf edge towards Lover's Cove. Eight of these beams were repaired in 1990, where the balanced 13 beams are original from 1969. Those are the ones that we've been working on here since we awarded the contract. From the design report, there's some additional work that needs attention within the next five years on those eight repaired beams. And I'll show you some photos here, but for the most part, they're still in pretty good shape. The initial estimated quantity for these eight beams reflected a smaller planned work due to the previous repair work. The additional repairs can be delayed into a future phase up to five years in the future, with the exception of the traverse beams adjacent to the steel beams and grates in the area of these eight beams. And the reason for that is we have to put new beams in and new grates in. And so those areas where those beams are right in those openings is where we still need to make some repairs, not the area that goes out over the water. Three additional beams are a must-complete now item due to their current condition. In addition to the traverse beams, there are longitudinal edge and middle beams, so those are the beams that run down the length of it and also in the middle of the wharf, that need some work. The completion rate and status of longitudinal edge and middle beams is consistent with the traverse beam discussion, okay? So, in those first eight, they've already been repaired, they're not in need of any significant work, they could be delayed. That helps us, because that helps us kind of push some of this out. The longitudinal beams and the segments that are now must-complete areas of the traverse beam also must be completed now, okay? So that's the area in beams nine through 21, and I will get to something to show you where that is. Just let me get this background done. The contractor estimated that additional 750 feet of cubic feet of repairs will be necessary to complete the must-complete areas now. At the bid item price of $625 per cubic foot, this results in an increase of $440,625. So that's the beams, okay? So what's underneath? Okay, and this is a little bit shorter. Second, consider the deck repairs. The deck repairs are further along than the beam repairs, and that's what you've been seeing the contractor working on besides being underneath, and especially when it was during the bad weather. He got back up there, and that's one of the reasons we had to keep going, we had to go in there and keep on working on the deck. The deck repairs adjacent to the eight beams were at contractor order, were being proposed to be completed in a future phase, must be completed now, okay? Because we've just seen the extent of damage. This is required due to the proximity of the concrete and its condition of the steel beam pockets and the grates, just like I had discussed before. So, again, there is an additional 3,335 cubic feet of deck repair necessary at $301 a cubic foot. That's an additional $100,835. So the last item to consider, you know, that really needs to be repaired here is third, consider the work that is scheduled and materials are on hand and can be completed later. So, this item is the pile jackets and pile corrosion protection. So right now, as you're looking at that picture, that pile there is in relatively good shape, and that's a design report. We're looking for this structure to be plus 20 years and beyond. And so one of the things that happens to a pile is that, again, there's corrosion that gets in there when it gets cracks. So we don't want it to get cracked, and we also don't want it to get hit by something that's floating in the ocean or a vessel. And so that's why we protect it, and you see those along marinas or even on freeways, they put jackets of steel, you know, around these. So, that item was bid on this project, and then also there was corrosion inhibited products that were going to be put on this. And so that was an item, and it was about $280,000 was the total amount for this item. But one of the things we can do is, since they're still in good shape, is we can take the materials which we have on hand and we've stored in our warehouse, and we can even install these ourself at a later date. That would save $200,000 in labor that we can use to reallocate to some of the things we're talking about right now. Fourth, there's additional mobilization costs of $12,000 to transport additional materials because to do this work, we'd have another barge load coming over. So, excuse me. Just going over a few quick pictures here. This is the area where, 1990, that we repaired the beams. And you can see that there's some cracking, as you get down to that bottom left corner, it says, you know, you can see the beams are still pretty good shape compared to the next set of pictures I may show you. But that's why I'm saying that this can be done in a future phase if necessary. It's, I mean, we're going to make the argument that it's most cost-efficient to do now, but if necessary, this can be done, you know, these first eight beams can be done in the future. And the scope of work was much smaller in the contract. This is what, before we started, what the beams looked like, and you can see the extent of the damage on beams nine through 21. There is no concrete left, and all of the rebar is corroded and gone, you know, in the first three to four inches of the beam. And so, this is what we saw, and then we also, through the design report and pinging the different beams, located additional areas that were spalled. But then, once we got in there and started, you know, taking the chisel hammers to, the jackhammers to it, there was much more, you know, like doubled the amount of extensive damage. This is a photo of the piles where they were underwater diving, and they wanted to show how high-quality the piles are, still in good shape. And what they did is they removed all the growth on there, and that's why it looks like, you know, somebody has taken and chiseled off there versus it being slick concrete at the top. But it just shows that there is, you know, at this point, it's still in good shape, it's great to put that remediated effort, you know, anytime you build something in the ocean, you should be putting corrosion here and protection, and that's why it's in the project, but it doesn't necessarily have to be done at this moment. Okay, so this is a plan view of the wharf. As you see at the front edge there, that rectangle was the same as that blue rectangle, and then that, you know, odd shape there, that polygon that's kind of an odd shape is, would have been the orange piece in that first slide. And the reason I'm showing this, those Xs there are your grates, okay? And so you have, and there's 20 of those, and there's, you know, a beam on each side, so that's why there's 21 beams. If I'm all the way at the far left corner looking at this, that's Beam One. And if I'm all the way out at the point of Cabrera Mole, that's Beam 21. So the first eight are out there by the crane, and the nine through 21 are out there, and those are the ones that we've been working on, okay? This is another top view picture of that, and this was also from the plans the contractor bid on, it showed the extent of the damage, and this is where you can see the shaded areas, and that's what was noted. And just imagine that being double. Okay, and this is just showing as we were in construction, this is the replacement of some of the deck, this one, you can imagine that probably 80% of the deck has been done now. But this is typical where we jacket our mouth the concrete down to, you know, about two inches below the rebar, clean that out, we either replace the rebar, it needs to be within 85% of its nominal value, so 85% of it has to be left. And then we put an anti-corrosion coating on it, and then we repour this with very high-strength concrete that the contractor mixes on-site. Here's another pour, this was out by the mole crane, you can see the mole crane to the right. You can also see that this is one of the traverse beams, and you can see the steel there on the left-hand picture there, where we've replaced the steel, so you'll see in another picture as I move forward. Here's that steel, it's gone. And we have to get down, get everything cleaned out, remove that steel, and then we epoxy in new steel. And see, here's a completed product of the steel being there, ready to start forming. Now here we have the forms, and you see the extent of why we had to have the scaffold the way it was, because, you know, now we have the forms braced down to the scaffold, and, you know, you need to be able to have the workers and then also be able to go down there to pour it, because what they do is they have basically a grout pump that pumps it under pressure and gets it in there to make sure that it flows down that whole form and that it's all consolidated. And then you see the beams now installed on the new traverse beams there to the picture to the left, and there's the first four, you know, that's opening 20, 19, 18, 17. Now we've got brand-new steel beams, and the reason that we've got to fix those beams is those steel beams are in pockets in that concrete. And now you see the new grates installed in those right there, so you can see that progress happening. Okay, so now we're down to the alternatives. It's gonna, this should finish up quickly now, hold on.
So where those grates are that you just showed us, those piling anywhere down below are all taken care of?
They're, they're, no, we haven't done any work to the piling yet, and that's the piece that I'm seeing on the pile jacket. When I got into to consider the work on the pile jacket and
Right.
That I was trying to show that even down under the water, the piles are in good shape, but if we did do this work appropriately and we want it to last for 20 years, we should be putting jackets on them and putting corrosion protection. Does it need to be done tomorrow or with this? No, it could be done in a year, it could be done even with our own crews as we had time.
Okay.
Or it could be done with Phase Two, okay? But it just was a real good area to do cost savings without being detrimental in the short term to the project. But, full recommendation is definitely install those when you have the time and money to get them done.
Okay.
Okay, here's alternative one. Okay, so we summed up what I had talked about, and so the additional beam repairs, beam nine through 21, $440,625. Additional deck repairs for the entire deck, $100,835. Additional mobilization, that was that fourth item there, $12,000. Additional contingency, because our contingency was still, even though we had 25%, and we were trying to do as much, still, you can see the quantity, they're still not something that's easily estimated. It really is, when you get down there on the scaffold, put the scaffold in and actually get the work going, you can put a better estimate, you actually get a real number on it. Then, you can see where we've made a deduction, reallocate the pile jacket and corrosion protection, and that's taken that $200,000 of labor and reallocating it just to take the hurt off of here, but we're still will say, "Do that." And so that total supplemental allocation for alternative one would be $553,460. So, that would be the supplemental funding necessary to complete the work underneath the structure in the area of traverse beams one through eight is likely in the range of additional $500,000 to $600,000 if it takes place with the current project. As previously mentioned, this work further rehabilitates the beams that were previously repaired in 1990, and the work could be delayed until a future phase up to five years in the future. If it is packaged with a future phase in the near future such as Phase Two, the current contractor stated it could be possible that they would maintain the current pricing, they would come back. Cost to remobilize operations would be required, could be at least $100,000, because it's not just a barge, it's many barges to come over and bring scaffold and everything. So, that's a number that hurts you a little bit for cost efficiency when you send them off, so that would be why if we recommended doing also alternative two in conjunction with that, you know, that you would see that being recommended if it could be afforded. This alternative would complete the work with the exception of the beam work underneath the structure in the areas of one through eight, which can be logically included in another phase. So, you know, that was the area really by our building and over the water, but the area that would be in those areas of those grates on one through eight by the building, that would be necessary to be done to be able to do the beams and put in the steel grates there. So when you walked out there, it essentially looked like the top surface is done, has all the grates and everything supporting it's done. The outside would look like it's done on the outside, but you wouldn't get those first eight beams which were done in 1990 with a further rehabilitation, because they're still in reasonably good shape. So alternative two, second alternative would be to complete the work now as initially scoped, which would require a total supplemental funding request from alternative one, so keeping that, and then add a supplemental amount of $600,000. So then you would get up to a total of $1,153,460. So, you know, this would provide essentially the work planned except for the pile jackets, okay? In which we said, you know, we've already stored those in our warehouse, and they could be done in the future. Alternative three is, I can't say it's a do-nothing, but it's really the parachute here, and it just says, "We would be able to complete the construction contract with the funds originally allocated in the budget and reallocate the pile jacket to provide some additional funds to shut down the project." But with this alternative, significant portions of the steel beam and grain would not be able to be installed, approximately one-half of the project. It would just sit there, we'd store those things, and until we got the funds. So that basically just says, "We're not choosing alternative one or two, and we're going to just say, go back to getting work completed, you know, with what you have, and we'll do it here in the future." And of course, those mobilization costs and kind of the restart costs start eating into, you know, the cost effectiveness in it. But it is an alternative considering the times that we're in. So the recommended action steps. Alternative two is the most cost-effective alternative, and yet will provide, and will provide the most complete of scope as envisioned when the project plans were developed. Yet, during these dynamic times, when the normal visitor numbers have been significantly reduced, and of course, our warfage, which was to help pay for this, any opportunity to seek further clarity before proceeding with significant capital expenditures is prudent. So in that light, alternative one is recommended at this time, with a decision on alternative two to be evaluated in 30 days, and just saying, you know, any day that we can buy to get better clarity in our crystal ball, you know, why not take it? Because I really don't have to tell the contractor until about 30 days from now whether he's going home or whether to order more material. So you have that 30-days leeway there. I do have Matt Baker, our finance director, available for input on the availability of funds, so that you know that.
So when I've been doing my cash flow analysis, I've kind of been working under the assumption that the Mole project needs to be completed. We didn't have the specific numbers when I was putting together a lot of my estimates, but I had planned $800,000 in coming out of the harbor fund to complete the Mole project. Again, that was a rough estimate based on information available to me several weeks ago. So, my thought is that, you know, the Mole is obviously vital to the viability of our city, and so I have been factoring in cost to complete the Mole in my cash flow forecast. So, you know, is the money there? Yes. Do we need visitors? Absolutely. But it was something that I was factoring in when I was looking at where we stood.
But you're talking about alternative one or alternative two?
Well, the advantage of going with alternative one and discussion with Bob and Denise and Mike is that we're still moving forward with progress towards kind of the original envisioned scope. But it does provide us with additional time to where if ultimately that full scope isn't something we want to commit the full 1.1 million towards,
Right.
We, you know, we have that added flexibility, but it still provides us the alternative one with making additional progress on needed repairs. And so, kind of given the options, one with the intent of coming back and looking at two. Again, this has been a dynamic situation, you know, we don't know for certain what our visitor numbers are going to look like this summer, and so this allows us to continue making progress, but it does give us the ability to not necessarily fully commit the full amount if in a month from now, our outlook on the situation is different than maybe what it is today.
So, this supplemental allocation will draw down the harbor capital fund reserve, it'll drop, but how much is in that fund?
So, there was approximately $2 million at the end of March, I'd have to go back, but to go back, but there, I'd probably say that there's a million and a half right now in the, the, uh, the Harbor Fund, uh, from a cash basis.
And, uh, Bob Greenlaw touched upon twice, I believe, about the 50 cent extra warfage that you guys approved two years ago, maybe. And it does sunset, say February of 2021 and we would, we will be coming at you to extend that. If the hospital ballot gets placed, uh, hospital measure gets placed on the ballot, that would not go and gets passed, it would not go into effect until I believe April of 2022. So we, we would have an additional, um, year.
Okay.
So, you know, I think that's important. That was really the perfect storm with COVID and everything, you know, and we had planned that and we had slowed other harbor projects down and when we asked for that 50 cent warfage to be put in, we said, here, here, here.
Right.
And we really haven't progressed, just we kept the engineering going on the other ones, but we anticipated that there was a pot of funds, especially where it was raising about 650,000 a year. And then all of a sudden, when there was nothing and what you saw coming, that's why it's like, there was not a good story to come tell the community is like, we were in this bad shape, but we still want to keep going. But at least we had planned for it, you know? And we feel like even when we, if things come back, we can grow out of that because we have the mechanism already in place to grow out of that for a year of time, you know, to be able to do that. So there is a revenue stream that would help fund this.
Yeah.
Okay? And help replenish those funds so those other capital projects can happen, those very important capital projects like South Beach, the seawall.
Right.
Uh, you know, the, the club dock, uh, all of those.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, okay. So questions?
Questions?
I have none.
Good. I'm sorry it was so long, but there was a lot of details there.
Take advantage of it.
Yeah, okay.
But then it looks as though we should do.
So we are asking for alternative one.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then be coming, and come back every day.
Back in about 30 days and
Okay, so moved.
Yep. I'll second.
Moved in second for the community.
So do you have any questions?
Okay.
Call for any comments, any comment, Michael?
The visuals help.
I have no comments pertaining to this matter.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Uh, call for the vote?
I'm sorry. That's me. Councilmember De La Rosa. Aye. Councilmember Ponse.
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy.
Aye.
Mayor Marshall.
Aye.
I am number five.
We didn't get a pack anyway.
Huh? We didn't get a, we didn't have a
He's gonna, it's, it's carryover from the last council meeting where we first started it.
Yeah.
It's to make the decision.
Yeah. Okay.
So again, as a recap to the, the conversation we had at the last council meeting, ultimately what I'm going to be looking for is direction, uh, with regards to the, um, city's, um, funding of, of the, the chamber for promotion purposes. I have a, a brief presentation, just a quick financial update, not a whole lot's changed, um, but, uh, that's ultimately what I will be looking for direction for. So again, this is, uh, something that was published recently by the LA County Economic Development Corporation. It's something we're already aware of, but it is kind of nice to see it validated from an independent source. Avalon was identified as a top 10 city as far as municipal budget risk exposure. Uh, and, and what they mean by that is revenue sources that are going to be impacted by, uh, COVID-19 related disruptions. I, I would even make the argument that, that our revenue sources are even more vulnerable than some of the other high-risk cities, just given our geographic location as well as our reliance on, on visitor-driven tourism. Um, but as you can see, we were the second highest as far as, uh, elastic sources. And what they mean by elastic, it's, it's an economics term, but it essentially just means the, the impact one variable has on another variable. And so something if we were a city where property taxes are primary revenue source, we wouldn't anticipate there being as significant of an impact on COVID-19 on our revenues. But since most of our money comes from sales tax and tourism, uh, COVID-19 is, is going to have a bigger impact on our revenues compared to other cities in the county.
Yeah.
So again, it's something we already know, we're already living in it, but it is nice to see that, uh, it is reflected in the data. Again, on this chart, this is a comparison of April 2019 visitor-driven revenues to April 2020. Uh, going down the list, you can see that TOT went from 393,000 last year to just over 3,000 in the month of April. So this would be, uh, revenues that were due to the city, uh, on June 1st. Sales tax is, is provided, um, kind of on a, a delayed basis, so we won't know April's numbers till the end of this month. Um, but just as background information for council, the first quarter 2020 numbers, so that's January through March, were approximately one-third, uh, less than what, or, uh, the same quarter was last year. Again, that likely was due to, uh, taxpayers electing for the deferment, or at least that's my hope, so we'll see some of that money. Considering most of the, the quarter was pre-COVID, I would, didn't anticipate it to be quite that significant of a drop. Again, cruise ship warfage and cross-channel warfage, uh, cruise ship warfage was down 96% or cross-channel down 96%, cruise ship down 100%. Uh, nightly mooring fees for the month of April were down approximately 90% and ad tax 98%. So in total, we're looking at a, a million dollar decrease in, in cash inflows or revenues coming to the city for activity, uh, that happened in the month of April. Again, that number's likely even greater. Uh, I didn't list things like ambulance fees or, um, rents, uh, which also have a tourism impact to their totals.
That's bleak enough.
Um, I, I've got actually some positive news on this slide, but in general, this is what the revenue numbers looked like last year for May through August. Um, one thing to highlight on here is you can see July and August are, uh, approximately twice as much in revenue terms as April and May. Um, but that also means that even, uh, July and August at 50% of normal is the financial equivalent to the city of losing April and May. Um, so, you know, we, we've got some tough funds ahead. Um, on a positive note, uh, to touch on what JJ mentioned earlier, the harbor for Memorial Day weekend revenue-wise was approximately 70% of Memorial Day last year. Uh, Monday through Thursday after, uh, the holiday weekend was actually matched, uh, last year's Monday through Thursday equivalent. Um, and then this past weekend was 60% of the prior weekend equivalent. But again, we did have that weather event on, uh, Friday that may have discouraged some So again, this is just really to highlight the level of staffing and cuts the city has already incurred, but also highlighting that these cuts alone aren't sufficient to, um, cover the lost revenues if our visitor revenues are only even 50% of, of prior years. So what's the plan? Uh, right now, the plan is to maintain the current level of cuts as well as look for additional opportunities. We are working with our state and federal, our local reps for federal funding. Uh, there's two bills right now. The HEROES Act, uh, which is one I mentioned last time, as well as the SMART Act. I do not recall what it stands for, but it is a, a bill proposed by Senator Menendez in New Jersey and it's specific funding for state and local governments. While either or both would, would definitely help our situation, I don't anticipate either being the sole answer as far as funding to make up for lost revenue. So again, we're going to continue to advocate for a safe reopening. We are pursuing other federal funding, uh, opportunities as well as using debt financing to cover any shortfalls in our operating budgets. And so that's going to be brought back to council at a later date. So that is our plan to essentially make up for any, uh, shortfalls in the budget with borrowing, um, if, if council directs us to do so. Um, and that way we can, uh, make sure we can operate. So again, what I'm looking for now is direction regarding the chambers allocation. Uh, how we typically allocate is we do a 22% of our budgeted or anticipated TOT revenues for the year. We divide that up into even payments to the chamber. Um, and then at the end of the year, we do a true-up to if there's any additional owed, uh, we, we make those payments at that time. So if, uh, TOT were only 30%, we would be looking at, uh, 30,000 a month payments to the chamber. And that compares to the current year pre-COVID budgeted amounts of approximately 100,000. And if we were to allocate more beyond the 22%, I just want to keep in mind that we'd have to make corresponding offsets to, uh, city expenditures to make sure we're operating within our means. So with that information, uh, what staff is recommending is for the month of June to continue to fund the chamber, 16,653, that's one-sixth of the prior year's budgeted amount. And then for the month of July to authorize a disbursement of 30,000, so that would be 30% of our, um, prior year TOT figures. And then what our proposal would be, would be to come back to council and look for direction for the month of August and beyond. In the event that, uh, the situation changes in the month of July, if we see visitor levels at a higher level, we could then, uh, adjust the, the funding amounts. With that, open to comments or questions?
So that $80,000 of overpayment, we're just kind of putting that on hold?
Correct. Uh, uh, if, if that's, that's right now what we're proposing.
I'm sorry?
Right now, that's what we're proposing. Um, it's not that we wouldn't potentially look to be reimbursed for it, but for the, the time being, we're, we're right now looking for really direction for the month of June and July. And then we can decide how that money's, if it were to be repaid, how that were to be repaid at a later date.
Or to credit or whatever, yes, as things pick up.
We definitely would be getting the money back, it's just a
It's just how we, yeah. And maybe they don't write us a check, maybe we just give them less or whatever.
Slowly paying it off.
Right, right, right. Sounds good to me. I mean, I don't, comments? I mean, I don't
I'm in favor of staff's recommendation, one, because, you know, we're still in uncharted territory. We really don't know. We could be in July, we could still have a really good year, we could have so much more medical information with, uh, you know, COVID. Um, I think, um, defunding the chamber at this time is a really negative impact to our community, um, especially not knowing, uh, as, as we all know, every day things are changing. So I am more in favor of sort of mitigating and making sure that we try to keep everybody as, as partially whole as possible and not just, you know, completely out. It's the same as we looked at with the Mole project. If we stop work now, uh, the rolling that back out a couple of months from now is going to be a far greater financial impact, uh, and I believe that to be very similar for the chambers. So I'm, I'm in favor of staff's recommendation.
We, we definitely recognize the chambers' value and when we're making these decisions, we're trying to, to weigh, uh, you know, not only the, the good they do for us and for the community, but also with, uh, you know, the cost to ensure public health and safety. And so it, it, it's a tough decision, so I, that's why we wanted to bring it to you.
Do you need a motion?
We, we do have people outside that had wanted to come in and
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Hi, Jim LeJohan, welcome home.
Thank you. He had to get a new broom, dustpan. Somebody broke into his side yard and stole his things.
Oh, no.
I, I got to see our beautiful new hardware store first thing this morning. I had to buy cleaning supplies. Um, good evening, mayor and council. I just wanted to mostly be here to answer any questions or any specifics that you might have about how we are limping along in our budget and also to make assurances that we have been as diligent as, as I can imagine being in trying to find alternate funding sources throughout this whole time. We have applied for every program that we are eligible under the CARES Act. Um, and Matt will attest that I have peppered his inbox with every little thing I see that mentions tourism promotion, whether it's federal, state, or county. And, uh, often that requires a city partnership and as he has done a beautiful job of, of sharing with you and the community throughout the recent months, a small city is sort of last in line often for those programs. So I, I fully understand and appreciate that fact too, that it would be a small portion of a small portion if we, if we even manage to get to the table for it. So otherwise, I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions of Jim?
Um, I kind of want to ask maybe because, you know, I am new, if, I don't know, possibly like on the side meet with you so you can show me like where the funds are allocated and how that works. Cause I've never seen something like that before.
Yeah. And, and you're welcome at any point to look, our financials are all on our website, but I'm happy to walk through the details anytime with any council member.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else out there? Captain?
I have a question for Matt after.
Okay. Oh, okay. That was easy. Go ahead. Well, that's it, so we
Matt, let's take the vote and then I'll ask you my question if that's okay.
Even better.
Just stay, stay, stay strong, stay there.
This is it, right? After this? This is it?
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. Uh, so was that, uh, so did we already make a motion or did I make a motion? I would make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
You can second? Further comments?
Uh, no comments on this topic.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Ponse?
Aye.
Councilmember Lavelle?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Cassidy?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Okay, so back on your slide where you were, um, showing information from, from TOT payments received, um, or you've probably reseen all the reports, how much outstanding TOT are we expecting from March, February and March unpaid TOT?
Hard to say for certain, but there, by and large, most, uh, payers did pay, the, the harder to estimate is kind of the, the single, uh, short-term vacation rentals. It's hard to kind of do a, a year-over-year comparison. Uh, that being said, um, there is at least one kind of major TOT payer that, uh, at least as of today, we have not received. We have been in communication with them and I do expect to receive it shortly. Uh, dollar amount-wise, it'd be speculating, but probably in the, hopefully in near 10,000 would be my guess. But again, I haven't seen the report from them, but they have reached out and we hopefully will be getting payment. So while I, I do think there is some, I guess, March-April TOT, by and large, our, our hotel operators did, did report and pay, so I don't anticipate a, a significant amount, especially with the month of April being near zero for most businesses. Most paid February, um, and so really it was just a couple in, in March. It, it could be in the tens of thousands, but I, I would think probably closer to the, the 10,000 if that, but that would just be speculating based on prior years.
But with all of these additional, um, receipts to the city, we're, you know, TOT admissions harbor, everybody's required to turn in a report regardless. So are you suggesting that you're missing reports from February, March?
For a couple payers, I am missing reports. Um, and that is a great point. In our municipal code, I do have the ability to charge people a $30 penalty for not turning in the reports. Uh, at least since I've been at the city, that hasn't really been the practice in my understanding is even before that, it's been fairly rare for us to issue the $30 penalty for not turning in a report. Um, but there is a requirement and that's even, that's a good thing to bring up. Even if a hotel, say, had zero taxable activity this month, just so we have documentation of that, it's very important that we do get, um, those reports turned in. So there are a couple businesses that did not turn in reports for February and March. Um, and, and if, if, I, I can definitely charge them the $30 penalty. It hasn't been our practice to, um, we've been trying to just reach out to businesses and ask them. And generally, um, you know, a simple phone call usually resolves at least the, the reporting aspect of it. But by and large, most have turned in their reports, but there are a couple outstanding from February and March.
And I just want to apologize because I did not turn in mine for April.
Thirty bucks, Michael, come on.
Well, I, I am concerned about February, March, because we've, we've had many conversations and not necessarily, not being unfair to, to Sarah and Lisa, but prior when we first started, you know, coming into this, that, um, you know, we, we agreed that money is already collected and already in bank from our, uh, from our payers, uh, whether it's a CUP or, or a hotelier. So that should not have been affected. But now we're a couple of months down the road and many, many, many island many island businesses have received additional funding, whether it have been the SBA loans or the PPEs or whatnot. So while I did back then understand the concern for letting go of any cash in fear of what was going to happen now that we're a couple months down the road, we need to make right because those monies are not, those are not income monies to businesses. Those are passed through taxes.
And, and it's...
And the city needs that to survive.
And, and it's still my intent to charge penalties and interest. I think that's a lot of the reason why there hasn't necessarily been the $30 penalty for not turning in the form. I did communicate at, at the outset how important it was and, and by and large, our business community stepped up and, and came up with the money and, and paid. And so it is my plan for those businesses that, that elected not to, to use what resources the city does have to, to issue penalties. And I, and I feel like I have to do that because when I came up here two months ago at the start of this, I said I would. And by and large, businesses stepped up and, and paid on time. And so there, so even, even if we don't have the $30 missing report charged, there still is a penalty for someone who didn't pay timely.
Thank you.
And I have just another question. So the Edison employees that are at the Zane Gray, I understand that, I mean, I don't understand, we're not getting TOT for that, but would they have to have some kind of agreement to turn themselves into, to monthly, monthlies to do that?
My, my understanding of the municipal code is if there is a contract to rent for greater than 30 days, it would not be considered a transient rental, therefore not subject to the TOT. But you would need that contract in place. Otherwise, the first 30 days would still be transient. And then beyond those days, the stays would be considered non-transient. But if there was a contract in place at the outset of the stays for beyond 30 days, my understanding of the municipal code is...
Do we know that they have that?
We do not.
That might be a good question. It'd be nice to get 30 days where the TOT off of however many rooms they had up there.
And I, I will follow up. My understanding is that there, there was, but I have not seen the contract, so I can't say definitively.
Okay. Okay. And then, and I, something I keep bringing up, and I know you've been all busy with everything else, but those audits that we did, if we're not sharing with council, I'm sure curious...
I, I will be probably in the next meeting coming back. Jonathan Foster, our auditor with Davis Farr, did reach out to me. There's, he's looking for some additional information from, I believe, two of the businesses. He had kind of reached out to me earlier in kind of the, the COVID time period. And I told him, given everything else that was going on, to, to slow down on his follow-up questions and follow-ups for information. My understanding is he's started back with that process. We have received draft reports for, I believe, five of the, the eight businesses that were audited. I haven't had an opportunity to really review them in detail, but I will have a, a summary to, to council and I'll try to get that for the next meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Are there other questions? Pardon, Matt, I brought him up again. If we're good.
It's good.
I think we're good. Thank you so much. And if there's no further business?
Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony. I hope you're watching.
Let's have cake.
Yeah. We in adjourn.